So, welcome, everyone. Would you like to take a seat? Anyone that's coming in? We're all seated. Okay, good. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Robyn Davidoff, and I am your moderator tonight. The League of Women Voters of the St. Petersburg area is honored to be asked to moderate this important forum. The League does not endorse candidates. We serve the public by educating voters. If you have not yet turned in your question card, please do so by raising your hand, and we'll collect it from you. The primary election will be held on Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. If you have a mail ballot, it must be received by the supervisor of elections on August 20th. Please put your ballot in the mail a week before or drop it off at an early voting location. You can request a mail ballot by August 8th, and early voting is August 10th through 17th. The League's candidate forum rules are intended to provide all candidates with equal opportunity to express their views. I do want to mention that the way the city election works is the two highest vote-getters in this primary will go on to the general election, and everyone in the city will be able to vote for them. But only District 3 residents vote in the primary. Good. The questions we ask tonight were submitted by the public and also the audience tonight. We'll ask as many as we can in about an hour. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond to a question. Our timekeeper will provide a prompt with a 15-second warning and a "time's up" warning. After the question-and-answer session, each candidate will have two minutes to summarize their candidacy. The order of appearance was drawn before the event. I am grateful for the dedication of these candidates. It is not easy to sit family and work aside to run for public office. To find information about candidates in other races, please visit the League's nonpartisan voter guide, which you can find at vote411.org. And please remember to re-request your mail ballot if you have not done so, and you can check on that at vote411.org. Thank you to the League volunteers, cosponsors, public volunteers, and the very talented Cameron in the audio booth who helped tonight. Yes. Round of applause. Okay, so let's meet the candidates. So, in alphabetical order, we have candidate Peter Bolin, candidate Nick Carey, candidate Michael Harding, candidate Juan Lopez, who's on our Zoom screen. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. And candidate Barry Rubin. Very good. Okay, so let's start with the questions. And we're going to start alphabetically, and then we'll rotate the order of answering the questions. Okay, so let's get started. So first is candidate Bolin. What is your favorite Olympic sport to watch?
Thank you so much for having us here. My family's probably upset with me that we're here instead of watching the Olympics right now. This is a, that is a pretty tough question. When it comes to the Winter Olympics, I like the, I like the biathlon where they're skiing, and then they have to use the rifle to shoot. I really like that one. I used to love the Olympic baseball, and I really like Olympic basketball. We've been watching a lot of the swimming and diving lately. It's a pretty tough call. The surfing looks really nice right now in Tahiti, though. I'd say let's call it the surfing.
And candidate Carey.
So, my favorite Olympic sport, it's hard to choose between swimming and the gymnastics. It was a lot of fun today to watch the women take home the gold.
Okay, and candidate Harding.
Let's see. Our family plays soccer. My dad is a referee. I'm a referee, and my daughter plays, so we, so we have, we have watched every soccer game we possibly can.
Okay, and candidate Lopez Estevaz.
Yes. Good evening. I did want to also say thank you and to welcome to everyone. My sincere regrets that I can't be there with you in person, but I am partial to the Olympics when it comes to track and field. I did compete in the decathlon for the University of Florida, so track and field is my favorite Olympic sport.
Okay, and candidate Rubin.
Well, again, I just want to echo yours. Thank you for having us tonight, and I want to thank the other candidates for being here as well. They made it a better race, and they're going to want to make it a better city. I was also, like Mr. Lopez, ran track in high school. Of course, I was a field man, so shot put is actually my event and my favorite event to watch. I know it's not the most exciting, but it's, in my opinion, the only one I can do.
Okay. The next is candidate Carey. Next question, you start us off. In order to reduce the use of single-passenger cars, please describe what changes you would make to improve public transportation in St. Pete.
Yeah, so, as our city continues to grow, one of the most important things is how are people going to move around and how are we going to do it in an environmentally friendly and sustainable way? We're already seeing strain on parking from single-ruiter cars. In addition to the fact that we live on a peninsula, on a peninsula, climate change is very important for us to address. And so, the city itself doesn't operate our public transit by ourselves. We have to work with the county and the PSTA to make sure that we're actually having investments in public transportation that are strategic. I'm a fan of making sure that public transportation is accessible to everyone. I really liked the fact that the Sunrunner was free for everyone to use at the beginning. I wish that they would restore that. The city of St. Pete, who is, who made that happen initially, and so I'd like to see them operate in that manner again to help make public transportation easier for people to access as well.
Okay, candidate Harding.
The city of St. Pete wrote a program, I think it was three years ago, called Complete Streets, and, and you're seeing it slowly phased out, and I agree with, with most of what they've done. And the, the thought with public transportation is, we used to be a bus-centric society, and now we look at how they do it in Europe, and how do we become more pedestrian-friendly? How do we become more bike-friendly? How do we become more scooter-friendly? And, and what you saw, or what you now see on Central Avenue, where there isn't a bike lane, the entire street is a bike lane, I agree with that. What you see on 4th Street, where we have now made pedestrian crosswalks available so that if you're, if you're taking the bus to work southbound but coming home northbound, you have accessibility to cross the streets. The, the next phase of that, that, that they haven't rolled out yet, that I, that I'm very interested in and fully supportive of, is, is how do you make streets safe for folks not only to get on the bus on the main thoroughfares, but that live three or four or five blocks away? And so, and so, safety becomes a big part of, of how do we, how do we make public transportation safer? The, the, the plan to, to make these wider sidewalks, I forgot the terminology, but there's one down 1st Street, and there's one that, from the, the Pinellas Trail, there are three that come off the Pinellas Trail. I'd like to see those further developed. And so, the, the, as I come to the end, how do we make it, how do we, how do we allow pedestrians, bikers, and, and folks on scooters to get to work?
Okay, candidate Lopez Estevaz is next.
Yes, I'm a big firm proponent of multimodal transportation and making our city more pedestrian-friendly. I would like to see light rail introduced. I'm a big supporter and advocate for light rail, which will require a, a regional approach, and I'm happy to see that with the construction that's taken place with the Howard Franklin Bridge, that the infrastructure is being implemented for a light rail lane. I happen to be right now in Portland, Oregon, and I've been riding the light rail system quite a bit since I've been here. In fact, when we're finished with this forum, I'm, I'm taking the light rail to a, a function this evening. So if they can do it here, we can do it in St. Pete. I'd like to explore expanding the Cross Bay Ferry and coming up with more creative and innovative ideas and solutions for all of our citizens to get around, not just within our city, but within our region, as well as looking at the trolley, the looper, the Sunrunner, you know, all of these transportation options that we have in place now where we can expand and incentivize for, for them to become more, more in use.
Thank you. Candidate Rubin.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree with just about everybody here. As a matter of fact, we agree on a lot of things, and that's been a, a tradition through we, through this entire process, which is terrific, because I think these are the right answers. But one of the, the big issues with PSTA simply is the, not just the routes, but the timing of the routes. So if somebody were to go from, let's say, South St. Pete to go to work in the Northeast or go to work out at the beaches, when those facilities close, they would have no way to get home. So it would be extension of the routes, extending of the times of the routes and allowing more people to use the routes, because they'd be able to fit the times and needs of the actual workers, not just the times and needs of, that the bus runs, if that makes sense. Plus, I also think extending our, our bike lanes is happening naturally. It's as they build roads, that's, that's coming organically, so I think that's, that's fantastic.
Thank you. Candidate Bolin.
So I think first thing we want to do is we're going to make our, our city hyper-walkable so that people have an incentive then to then use that multimodal transportation so they can move into a walkable destination, be able to walk all over. And that, that becomes a multifaceted approach where you have to adjust zoning restrictions as it relates to parking, so you can relax some of those parking requirements that, that come with that multifamily housing, making that, that dynamic Central Avenue walkable. You know, I'm part of a business association that's trying to make Central Avenue more walkable, where there's less cars going through, because we think that's a real economic driver. But we also got to look to the future. I mean, nobody 15 years ago would have thought the convenience of Uber. You know, Uber bringing a car directly to your door. I think the future is going to bring a lot more autonomous vehicles to, to our doorstep. It's going to make things a lot more feasible, a lot more economic on fuel. I think it's going to be a lot easier to get in, deeper into neighborhoods instead of some of the traditional bus lines. I was a big proponent of greenlight Pinellas back in 2014, but I think I was wrong. We'd be 15-plus years into it now, and we wouldn't have one mile of track laid as of yet. There wouldn't be running yet, so we just, we needed to have 21st-century solutions, and I would be someone to be really leaning into technology to make these options more possible.
Okay, thank you. The next question came from our audience. Thank you, audience. There's still time to submit a question if you'd like, and this is the question. And we're starting with candidate Harding. What issue are you passionate about that you think city council can work on?
All right, passionate or determined? The, the, interesting question. I have two different answers. I got to think about passionate. The, all right, the, what I am most passionate about is, is the, the city park system that we have and what do we do with it? I believe that, that if you want to push children in the right direction, you have to give them the infrastructure and the, and the resources to, to get out of the house, get off the iPads, and all the, all the comedic jokes that we come up with for kids. We have, we have a park system. We have, I don't even remember the total numbers, 38 total parks, and of those 38 total parks, I think 14 of them have rec centers on them, and that's not enough. We have, we have a park in, we have, we have Purrier Park in, down in Shore Acres, and Denver Park right behind it, and neither one of them have a rec center. Shore Acres does, but on the north end, we don't. And the, the fields at Purrier are, are so low that we can only play soccer on them on days that it doesn't rain for at least three days. And the back end of Denver Park is so low that it's never been developed, and we've lived there since 1977. And I think that if, if we want to answer some of the questions that, that society has about, about what do we do with children, we have to give them a better system to go play sports at, to work with their friends, to learn social skills, and so I'd like to see our, our park system expand.
Okay, candidate Lopez Estevaz, you're next.
Yes, well, I'm passionate about our city, our character, our identity, our charm, and in deciding to run for this race and in all the conversations that I've had in the community, you know, a common theme is that a lot of our natives and long-term residents are really feeling like they're not being represented. They feel that our city is starting to change into something that it, that it wasn't. It has changed, obviously, but it's changed in a good way, feel that the change is swinging a little bit too much to the pendulum where our natives and long-term residents feel like they're, they're being left behind, and hearing a lot of them deciding to move, a lot of their children, they were raised here in the city, that are, are coming back from school and having to move, you know, further away and further out. I want to find that balance. I believe that we can be that St. Pete that has that thriving and vibrant atmosphere while it's a St. Pete for everyone, not just newcomers that are coming from the Northeast and moving to downtown, but also for all of our residents that have been here for a long time.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Rubin.
Yes, thank you for the question. I have, the answer to that question for me is very, very simple, and it should be for anybody running for council in this district, and that is simply flood mitigation. It's what I'm most passionate about. It's why I'm running. 1,207 houses in Shore Acres last summer were flooded. That's sometimes, some for the third and fourth time, and that is unacceptable, in my opinion, and nothing else really matters. When you are standing in your living room and you're knee-deep in water, nothing else matters. So that it would be the first, second, and third answer to that question for me, what I'm passionate about, and that is flood mitigation. I've been working on it as a candidate, and I will continue to work on it as a city councilman.
Thank you. Candidate Bolin.
So this is a difficult question to answer for me, because I think this entire campaign is a passion project for me. I have deep, deep love for this city, and I'm very passionate about many of its issues, whether it be addressing some of the unhoused issues and the open drug scene, whether it be economic development or gun violence. I was witness to a violent act with a, with a gun 10 feet in front of me downtown last October, or if it's flooding, you know, I'm a five-time flood victim in Shore Acres. But also, I, I think what I'm probably most passionate about would be, I want government to be a hand-up, not a hand-out, that I want us to be able to help. I want us to eliminate some of the barriers to entry to the marketplace. I want us to cut the red tape. You know, when I talked to my friend Sean King today, who works for Habitat for Humanity, and the amount of red tape and struggle that Habitat for Humanity has to build new homes in St. Petersburg, I want to eliminate some of those barriers to entry, and I want to make it easier for people to open businesses, to build new homes, to do that flood mitigation they need to do in Shore Acres, like, like what we have to address. And I'm just very passionate about getting things done for our city and for our constituents and, and fighting to address all of our many problems.
And candidate Carey.
What I'm most passionate about is the economic stability of our residents. It is existential for folks, particularly when it comes to the issue of housing. This is an issue I've worked on personally as a community organizer over the last several years, and I also feel so passionate about this because it connects to so many other issues. Like first, if you don't have a roof over your head that you can afford, nothing else matters. You aren't able to get a job, you, your kids aren't able to get educated. But also for the city, it connects into so many other things. The development of our city is growing, and it's leaving behind far too many of us. And so, when we think about housing, we can think about it not only from an economic lens, but we can think about it from an environmental lens. How are we building and developing sustainably in a way that meets the needs of our residents and not necessarily the, the profit desires of developers in our city?
Thank you. Okay, the next question will start with candidate Lopez Estevaz. This question also comes from our audience. How do you propose to manage the new state law regarding sleeping on public property?
Yeah, I, I do not believe that we should be criminalizing our homeless. We should be tackling the issue with empathy. I would look to collaborate and work closely with Chief Holloway, who I have the utmost confidence in, that we could work together to provide the resources and assist our homeless that are on the streets. And instead of having them to put them in jail, we put them in, in shelters where they can get the therapy, the resources, be able to be rehabilitated, and, and make sure that we're not approaching the hopeless, the homeless issue from a criminal perspective but from a humane perspective.
Okay, and candidate Rubin.
Yes, thank you. I agree 100% with Mr. Lopez. We cannot criminalize being poor. That's not something that we can do as a society. I run an organization through my Chamber of Commerce called Hand Up Pinellas, and I'm most proud of a few things that we do. Last year, we fed 2,500 families. We're working with the state of Florida through appropriations this year to feed 5,000. But more importantly than the food that we provide, we provide resources, how to get resumes written, how to get rides to job interviews, how to get clean clothes, how to get haircuts, how to shave, things like that, so they can get jobs and help themselves up. It's a hand-up, not a hand-out. Not to mimic Pete, that was an excellent plug of our program. And so, I, I, again, we need to find solutions, not criminalize folks for positions that may not be their fault, and even if it is, it's not something that needs to be criminalized. We have enough real criminals here that need to be dealt with.
And candidate Carey. Oh, Bolin, sorry.
Oh, I'm incredibly passionate about this issue. Both my businesses, a butt, Williams Park, we're on each side of Williams Park. This is something I deal with very regularly. I'm very much aware, you know, I'm probably the only candidate up here that knows many, many unhoused and homeless people by, by first name, you know, whether it be Jamal or Lauren or Apollo. We see Apollo all the time. He's usually pretty friendly. You know, for, for me, this is one of those things that's going to force this issue for us to actually attack and address this. I had a meeting this morning at St. Pete City Chamber, St. Pete Chamber of Commerce, and Chief Holloway spoke today. He said the city is ready, and we're looking at probably 50 chronically homeless people that are, that are in violation of this law. He believes that there is more than abundant resources at Safe Harbor, and Pinellas hopes to house these folks in shelters. So he thinks that the law is going to be a good thing, according to what he said to us today, too. So they, they plan to address this, and we have to kind of balance out how we're going to deal with this issue with compassion. And I think the, the single mother who's escaping domestic violence has to be treated differently than a person who's chronically abusing fentanyl or alcohol or is completely addicted to drugs or has severe mental health issues, or both. So we have to kind of treat those folks a little bit differently than those that are victims of these unfortunate circumstances, but I definitely want us to have better connective tissue, work greatly with the Sheriff's Department and the county to make sure that we're, we're properly supporting these shelters so we can get those people in, in beds.
So, I, I sit on the board of the Homeless Leadership Alliance for Pinellas, so this, this is something that is, I'm very passionate about. The Homeless Leadership Alliance employs a Housing First methodology, which is the idea of regardless of whether someone has mental health issues or substance abuse issues or what they've done, they deserve a roof over their head. This model has been proven out across the world to be effective. But what I want to actually really talk about when I, when I talk about this question is, why is it a handout when it's for working and poor people, but it's not a handout when we're giving millions in tax dollars away in subsidies to something like the Tampa Bay Rays for a baseball stadium? That, to me, is a handout. Our residents, our working people are what make this city go, and we owe it to them to provide safe and secure housing, mental health resources, substance abuse resources, all the resources they need to live a successful life, not more policing, not more criminalization.
Candidate Harding.
So I, I think that first and foremost, the, the municipal governments and the county governments need to serve a role at the state level, and the, the idea that, that city councils and mayors and county commissions can go up to Tallahassee to lobby the state officials, this law, I, I am struggling with tremendously. That's part of it. The other part of it is the, the, the private charitable organizations are well-suited and doing a great job, and the question is, how better does the city work with these organizations? The, the St. Pete Free Clinic has, has not only housing available but rapid rehousing. The St. Paul's is absolutely phenomenal, and we can keep going and keep going. And, and our company has a, has a foundation, and we build backpacks to help folks in, in these, these situations. Believe it or not, they're all handed out through a squad in the Pinellas, or in the St. Pete Police Department that is dedicated to dealing with folks that, that do not currently have homes. They're not there to police them. They're there to help them with whatever it is that they need. If they need a bus ticket, St. Pete Police Department is going to find a bus ticket to get them back to where they want to go. And my, my point is, my answer to the question is, how does the city use its resources and its talent base to better work with these organizations that are experts, what, what Nick is talking about? How does the city bolster this, this organization that Nick volunteers with to, to let the experts help the folks in these situations more?
Okay, the next question is for candidate Rubin, and this came in from the public with the RSVP. When making a decision, what sources of information do you use?
Just a general decision, not council-related?
Um, let's say council-related.
Okay, fair enough. So a council-related decision, I would of course cede to the staff. I think the staffs are the experts in each of these areas, and I would then speak to the organizations that are affected. So they would be the, the two areas I would go to. I think this has become a council, one of the least trusted that I've seen in the 30-some years living in this area, and I think portion of that is because they do not take the advice of the staff as often as they should. I think the mayor does. He relies heavily on the staff, but as far as council, they sometimes feel that they know better, and that certainly can't be the case in every situation. I know that, what I know, but I certainly know what I don't, and that's where I think staff would come in, in, to play and be very important in that respect.
Okay, and candidate Bolin, sorry, you're next.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Of course. When making a council decision, what sources of information do you use?
So I'm a voracious reader. You know, I, I read everything that I can get my hands on, especially as it relates to local. I follow the St. Pete Catalyst, Florida Politics, TampaBay.com. That, that only gives you one part of the story, though, so I think you really need to have a deep dive. I think you should talk to the administration, you should talk to the experts. If it's a housing issue, you should talk to Amy Foster, right? If it's economic development, or if it's, you know, you need to talk to these specific administrators, and you need to talk to the people on the ground, whether it's, whether it be like an issue like homelessness, like we're talking about. We should talk to the folks that are dealing with this, the folks at the St. Pete Free Clinic and elsewhere, folks here, like at, at Allendale Methodist. They're, they're dealing with this stuff often, so I think you need to talk to the folks on the ground, you need to talk to the people that are, that are living and breathing these issues, and you need to get a good earful from them. It should be, part of this job is going to be listening. You know, there's not a ton of power that comes with being on city council. You're going to be one of eight. You don't have a, an ability to hire and fire hardly anybody, but you have tons of influence. You have to be able to use that influence, and you're going to be able to use that influence by going and garnering and reaching out for, for all sorts of input from the community and those stakeholders.
Okay, candidate Harding. Oh, sorry. Yes, Carey.
First and foremost, we need to talk to the residents, specifically the ones who are dealing with problems. If we want to know what the solutions to folks who are unhoused, we need to talk to people who are unhoused. We need to talk to people who are rent-burdened. We need to talk to the folks in Shore Acres who are dealing with flooding. What do you need? What can you, help you prevent this from happening in the future? My background in community organizing has really led me to believe that the people closest to the problems are best positioned to offer solutions. And so, of course, we're going to take that information, and we're going to work with experts on how we're going to make that happen. We're going to lean into community-based organizations like Sierra Club on environmental issues, and so many great neighborhood associations we have as well. All of it goes together, but it has to start with those dealing with the issues in our community. They are the ones that can articulate best what they need, and it's our job to listen and find ways to implement it.
Candidate Harding.
The, the, the answer is quite literally everyone. Everyone that you can possibly talk to. We, we have, sitting up here for, for these, it is this group, we're at our fifth one, I think, and there have been questions about zoning. Well, okay, if you want to learn about zoning, you need to talk to not only city staff, not only folks from permitting and engineering and, and the building department, but you also need to have a cadre of folks that you rely on from the building, or from, that are actually builders, that are actually architects and engineers that work with, with those builders. You need to talk to land use attorneys. And so the answer is, you need to talk to everyone you possibly can who is involved in that particular issue that, that either is affected by it, could be affected by it, or has an expertise in it.
Thank you. Candidate Lopez Estevaz.
Yes, before making any decision, it's research, research, research. It's speak with the staff, speak with all sides on any issue, especially it's organizations that have an expertise or an opinion on the matter. First and foremost, the residents, who I would be serving to represent, and I'll take the same philosophy that, that I have in my current role as an executive for a city department, that whenever I'm evaluating, whether it's a piece of business or a vendor, it's to research to the teeth and also do a reference check and check other cities that may have hosted this event or other convention centers that have used this vendor in the hosted this event, or other convention centers that have used this vendor in the past, to make the best decision possible.
Okay, so, candidate Boland, you're next up, but this is a lightning round question, which means a yes or no answer, please. Should residents have an opportunity to vote on 30-year revenue bonds?
On 30-year what?
Revenue bonds.
On 30-year revenue bonds?
The city issues.
I think we have a representative government, you know, we just talked about what it takes to have a difficult decision for a city council, all the people you need to talk to. I think it's very difficult, so I would say no. Am I keeping it going, or passing it over?
Oh, candidate Kerry.
Sorry, how long do we have to answer, please? These are lightning rounds.
Oh, is this a yes or no answer?
Oh, okay.
But you can take a little longer than yes or no.
Yes, I believe that we should take these issues to voters. One of the best things that St. Pete has done, has made any development on the waterfront, have to go to voters. There's a precedent for having important decisions that are made into the hands of voters, and so, I believe in empowering people with more decisions like this.
Okay. Candidate Harding.
I, you've stumped me. I am, I really would have to think about this more. My struggle is, and we're really looking at what we did with the Rays, massive decision, billions of dollars, and I am struggling with, we have a form of government, and that form of government is representative. We have elected eight city council members and a mayor to make these decisions, and I don't know in the city charter where it doesn't define anything that is too big for that city council to handle. No, I don't think so. I think the, I think city council should be tasked with this, and the mayor should be tasked with bringing it.
Candidate Lopez Estevez.
Yes, I do believe the public, when it comes to a major substantial issue such as a 30-year bond, should be put before the public.
And candidate Rubin.
Yes. You wanted to ask her no, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
I gave you a few more words.
Oh, okay.
Your colleagues took some more words.
Yes, I do agree with the representative form of government, but there are certain situations where it calls for to trust the voice of the people, and I think that is a 30-year referendum would certainly be, fit into those parameters. So, yes, I would trust the voters.
And candidate Kerry, you're up. What are the top three citywide issues that the city council needs to address?
Cost of living is number one, as I've kind of laid out before. Sorry, do I have a minute and a half, or is this just kind of?
It's a minute and a half.
Okay.
We'll start the clock over.
Okay. So, addressing the cost of living, I think, is the biggest citywide issue that can come with issues of housing, that can make sure that we are having better wages, reducing utility costs. One of the things I would really like the city to get involved in is providing affordable city-run childcare as part of having a strong economy, to make sure that parents are able to afford to both be parents and both be workers. In addition to that, investing in our infrastructure to protect our environment and our homes is the number-two issue for us. We have flooding, not just in our district, but across the city. And I think that we should really look into exploring leaving the contract with Duke Energy when it comes up, to have a city-run utility that would improve services, lower costs, and more rapidly transition to renewable energy. And then, the last thing I want to say is just on community support and engagement, really democracy. I agree with Barry when he said that there's low trust in the city government, but I think it comes from the residents, because there's a lot of lip service to listening to the residents, but there's not a lot of initiative to actually make those things happen. So, accessibility to city government, and investing in the things that boost folks' quality of life over being overly concerned about corporate profits.
Candidate Harding.
The, I think first on the list is the availability of workforce housing. Not only are, not only are we devoid of options for workforce housing, but there's also not currently a path to building workforce housing. And unless we focus on a real, true, public-private partnership that allows some of that cost to be deferred, we're not going to build workforce housing. And I think that's a major issue, and it's something city council should take on immediately. Second would be, second would be infrastructure. The city, our municipality is no different than any other municipality, and we've gotten behind on infrastructure. There is an article in the paper yesterday or today about stormwater. The city's master water plan, which was written in 2019, is already behind by a year and a half in terms of funding. And municipalities have a tendency to take on the things that elected officials have tenure for, two-year, four-year projects, but we don't spend enough time, enough energy, and enough capital, balance sheet capital, on what does the city look like in 20 years? The, part of the, part of the issue in Shore Acres is that we are behind on basic stormwater things. We need two more pump stations. We need, we need that piping down 62nd Avenue, and it should have been built in 2017. And I think I've, I think I've run out of time.
Okay. Thank you. Candidate Lopez Estevez.
Yes, I would say first and foremost is the overgrowth and overdevelopment of our city. Our city's growing too fast, and while growth and development is a good thing and signs of a thriving city, I believe we should be growing smart and responsibly, and too many times, we're putting the cart before the horse, and which leads to infrastructure and our flood, flooding issues. Our aging infrastructure needs to be addressed immediately when it comes to our aging pipes, our roads, our capacity. And then, finally, is affordable housing and the rising cost of living. As I mentioned earlier, too many of our children that have been raised in the city are now having to find themselves move further and further out, and it's just because they can't afford a place to live. So, both from a housing and cost-of-living perspective are areas that need to be addressed from a city perspective.
Okay. Candidate Rubin.
Well, surprise, surprise, that my top three are certainly going to be infrastructure, including flood mitigation, which is what I'm running on, second being workforce housing, and the third being transportation, getting people to and from where they live to work and back safely. But first and foremost, we have to, without exception, repair our infrastructure. We have to have a place for stormwater to go. We have to have a place for our floodwaters to go, and like Mr. Harding said, it's, we're way overdue. It's, we don't disagree on much, and that's one thing that we don't. We are way overdue on those areas. And workforce housing, obviously, it's been everybody's answer, so it must be right. And they're the three. So, thank you for the question.
Candidate Boland.
So, I'm thrilled that we don't have to talk Ray's Stadium anymore, because that is an issue that's finally over. That's been one of those top-three issues for many, many candidates for many years around here, so I'm glad that we can finally put that behind us. But if you're asking me what my top three would be, I would say flooding and stormwater mitigation is a real thing, and it's something that's not just exclusive to Shore Acres. It happens on Central Avenue. It happens behind my businesses. It just happened to us out when we were out on the west side by Northwest Park. Cars were getting stuck in the road on 22nd Avenue and 58th Street, so it's a real thing that we need to address. We need to have that long-range plan to figure out those things. I also think, you know, if there's one issue that dominates all others, is how do we make St. Pete more affordable again? That there's a real affordability crisis, and it's not just in the limited housing supply. It's those things that nickel and dime you, when it comes to if you want to build an ADU, the permitting process there, or if you want to open a new business, like Rafael and Kawa, who's built a great brand here that's iconic in St. Pete, Kawa Coffee. Took him four years to open a drive-through coffee shop. He can afford that damage being done and all that money being tied up, but the average person that's just starting out can't do that. So, we really need to address a lot of affordability issues. A lot of that's involved with red tape. And then, we just need to do economic development. We need to attract real great jobs here. I'd like to see Moffett come back to the table. I'm thrilled that we have a major economic development project happening at the gas plant, but I want to make sure St. Pete's economy is dynamic, so that will help with that affordability issue.
Okay. The next question will start with candidate Harding. This came in from the public. What are your plans to help seniors? Seniors, sorry. No one up here, but.
Yeah, not us. My plans to help seniors. That's a fair question. That'll be the first time this whole campaign that's been asked. Okay. So, the first and foremost is back to the affordable, the workforce housing or affordable housing issue. The, if you don't own your house, your rent has gone up. And for those on a, for those on a fixed income, and Social Security pays next to nothing, $3,000 a month, the ability for us to build workforce housing in conjunction with honorable builders, we have to be able to defray the costs of, the truth of the matter is that raw material has gone up tremendously. The truth of the matter is that labor has gone up tremendously. And if we're going to, if we're going to build apartments that can rent for $1,500, $2,000 a month, it is going to have to be in conjunction with efforts from the city of St. Petersburg. First and foremost, the city gets in the way, and that needs to be addressed. It is the permitting issue, it is the building issue, it is the codes issue. It is the ability for, I'm using up my time. It is the ability to go from a duplex to a quad involves, and involves the fire department in a way that you can't do it anymore. And I'll leave it at, we need to address affordable housing.
Candidate Lopez Estevez.
Yes, I have both a mother and father who are seniors. They're retired on fixed incomes, and any time that a property insurance bill comes into the mail that's doubled or tripled, it's absolutely devastating financially to them. So, from a city council, from a city perspective, I am a firm proponent, ensuring that our millage rate is reduced and not increased. I would like to look at our utility bills to see where we can decrease our utility bills instead of increasing them, work with our other providers in the city to help reduce overall costs, just the cost of living on our seniors who, like my parents, just, you know, can't, can't afford to continue to live off of their income as prices skyrocket, and they are no condition to be able to go back into the workforce either. So, any programs, grants as well, to help our seniors be able, that cannot pay certain bills or have resources, I'm a firm supporter and proponent of making sure that those avenues are open to them, and that we communicate and make sure that they are informed of those services available to them.
Candidate Rubin.
Well, our millage rate has been reduced year after year in the last several years as well, and there are programs, utility programs, that aren't widely known, and that's some of the education that has to happen. I think we will be able to help our senior population with utility issues, like the cost of utilities that continue to go up, if their programs are a little more transparent. I think that's a problem across the board in the city. There are a lot of programs and availabilities that are just not known by people, so that's one thing that needs to be done. The second is, there needs to be some tax incentives and some opportunities for the housing costs to be reduced for the seniors that are, like they do in certain areas. Phoenix, Arizona, for example, has some extensive discount on property rates, and I realize they're run by the county, but there are some partnership programs that cities and counties work together, and that would not be the first time that's ever happened in this country. So, that's what I would work for, to try to work with the other parties that participate in that, to keep the cost affordable for our seniors, because it's, it's just not fair that their income stays fixed and everything else around them goes up, especially in these days. It's, it just won't keep up.
Candidate Boland.
So, I think at the top of the list is to address those other issues that help all citizens in St. Pete, is those affordability issues. Now, this is an old problem here. My father was 46 when he had me, way back in 1984. You know, he fled in 2001 because St. Pete was too expensive for him then. This is 23 years ago. It was too expensive for him to live on a fixed income, so we need to make sure we're addressing these affordability issues. And I think we got to do a lot of the little things, too. We got to work on public safety. We got to make sure that our seniors are protected by our police forces. We need to make sure that there's no assisted living facilities that are in violation of constitutional rights and abusing people. You know, there's ALF in our neighborhood, you know, that it's, we got to make sure we're properly keeping an eye on these types of folks. We need to make sure the sidewalks are easy. So, when we have a senior citizen that's using a cane, it's hard to navigate, negotiate some of these sidewalks and streets around town. And then, you know, just got to champion those affordability issues and work on a lot of the little things, you know? That would be what I want to do. And also, I was going to say, there's a crisis of loneliness in this country. We need to make sure we champion community aspects, make sure we're checking on people, make sure we're building stronger neighborhoods, stronger communities, stronger church organizations, and making sure the city is passing along a lot of the information. There's a lot of great programs and offerings that our city has that don't actually reach the people that need them, so I'd want to make sure that we're doing all that we can in those little things.
Thank you. Candidate Kerry.
Well, I'm going to name the same issue that everyone else has, but I have a very different view on how we actually approach it. Cost of living has really been straining seniors, that's been said. Seniors are often on a fixed income. We've seen over a 700% increase in homelessness amongst seniors in Pinellas County. But instead of championing things like public-private partnerships, I think we need to directly invest in our residents. Public-private partnerships, if you ask me, are actually the worst of both worlds. On a more conservative side, we're kneecapping innovation and private companies' incentive to create solutions that will actually benefit consumers. And on the other side of things, we are transferring public wealth away from working people to the wealthiest within our city, and we shouldn't be doing that. So, I think we need to invest in revenue-generating public goods and services, housing amongst them. We can generate revenue through city-owned and developed housing that increases public wealth, not developers' wealth. We can invest in community centers. As I stated before, we can take back control of our electrical grid from Duke Energy to generate more revenue for the city, and directly invest in our residents and cut out the middleman of profit.
Okay. The next question is for candidate Lopez Estevez. What can really, underline three times, be done about the flooding in Shore Acres?
Well, long-term, the only solution is elevation, and we can make decisions today and start working today to get as many homes elevated, which is going to take time, but the biggest obstacle, hindrance to that is all of the red tape and bureaucracy with programs such as what FEMA offers for home elevations. So, I want to promote low-to-zero-interest loans, property tax credits, and anything and everything that we can do to start getting as many homes elevated as possible. It's only been 13 or so homes that have used that FEMA grant program since 1996, which that number needs to dramatically increase. In the short term, what we can do today is continue to expand on the successes that have been happening over the last few months, ensuring that all the backflow preventers are replaced to keep that saltwater out from flooding our streets. The temporary pumping stations, until we can get the permanent pumping stations that are in the works, I'd like to look to expand on pumping stations to get the streets clear as quickly as possible. The maintenance crews, additional maintenance crews to ensure that the pipes are cleared out in a much more expeditious manner than before. So, those are, these are all steps that at least short-term we can do with the eventual goal of making the decision stay towards a long-term solution.
And candidate Rubin.
So, Juan's right in almost everything he said. The elevation, not necessarily that portion, but the flooding otherwise, absolutely. So, the problem is our pipes are lateral, so they're flat pipes. That's why there's water in on the streets, even on sunny days, because the water backflows out. We have, as a member of the Shore Acres Civic Association Board of Directors, we met with the city on several occasions, and one, we met with the engineering department, and we demanded that there was something done, because they would tell us there's not much that could be done, other than what Juan suggested, which is elevation, which is just simply not true. We've replaced 158 backflow preventers. We have doubled the size of our crews. There were only two crews in the city of St. Petersburg that cleaned the drains, two. For a city this size, unacceptable. There are now four crews. There was times when things were found in those storm drains that people had lost years ago. I have a neighbor that, this sounds, you're going to laugh, because everybody, every time I've sold this story, people have laughed. They found her welcome mat that had floated away eight years ago in one of the storm drains. Well, that means to me, that drain had not been cleaned or inspected by a city official in eight years. Unacceptable. So, we have doubled the crews, and that should help quite a bit, and as the pumps go in, that will help as well to keep the sunny day flooding at bay. And that's And that's just as bad as the storms, when the storms come.
Candidate Rubin, uh, Boland.
Uh, we could get a DeLorean and turn back the hands of time and go change some of the coating and change some of the development back there. You know, there's not, there's, there is some difficult choices there. We need to make sure that we're doing all that we can to do some of that upkeep, like Barry's talking about, keeping those storm drains clean. That's why I want to invest in things like smart city technology that will let us know and it'll flag those drains when we see that. You know, there's, there's been about 30 or so backflow preventers that they put in here that were just in a recent publication here. So we need to do those little things that'll help with that sunny day flooding. We can do little things, too, like adding more trees. Trees actually help, too, with some of the flooding as well, those little things as well. But also connecting people to these programs. So, you know, eliminating the red tape, like Juan said, you know, making sure that it's easier. So my best friend across the street, his flood is, his house has been flooded many times over. He just did a home equity line credit and then did get approved for a FEMA loan to, to reimburse his lifting of his house. So, and you see on my block on Massachusetts, there's five lots. They're clearing these single-story houses and building new big houses. What we got to do is make it easier for people to do this stuff. There's, it's very expensive to do these things. So, you know, I don't know if there's going to be enough money in the, in the city coffers to help fund lifting up all these homes that need to be there, but that option needs to be on the table. We need to help people get out that want to get out, and we need to make sure we're communicating to people. You know, part of the problem we had in December was that storm that came around Christmas. Nobody really believed that it was happening, it was coming. People were driving all through the neighborhood, and wakes were causing major damage in the people's houses. We need to make sure people know what's going on out there and help them find the connective tissue to, to have some real solutions.
So the morning after Hurricane Adalia passed, I was, I was scrolling through Facebook trying to see what's going on in Shore Acres, just how bad the flooding is. And I was struck by the fact that the first 10 to 15 posts are all about the flooding, how bad it is. And the next 50 posts were real estate listings. Come move into beautiful sunny Shore Acres. The answer is not cutting the red tape or deregulation. That is not part of the answer. In a long-term solution, the reason that this is so hard, and Barry spoke to this a little bit, is we're fighting physics. Shore Acres is a bowl. We have rising sea levels, and I don't care which way the, the pipes slant, if the water is above the pipe, the water's coming into the neighborhood. And so in the short term, we need to do what we can to have low-cost solutions, targeting the homes that flood the most. In the long term, we do need to invest in these types of infrastructure improvements, seawalls, pumps, backflow preventers. And we're going to have to make some hard decisions about some of these homes where residents want to get out of the city taking ownership of that land and turning it into a retention pond or something. It, it's not going to be an easy problem. It's not going to be something that's going to be solved overnight.
I think the one topic that we, we haven't addressed is what do we do today, literally today? The, the, the Shore Acres Civic Association did, has done a phenomenal job with, with working with the, its constituents and putting together experts in their field to look at how do you harden your home? The, the, it's been laid out by, by my four friends that this problem is here to stay and it's not going to go away very easily. There are solutions that need to be enacted that look at three years from now, but what about we're in the middle of storm season and it's coming next month? And there are technologies out there that allow you to harden your home and allow you to make your home close to waterproof, up to four feet. The city needs to get creative and look at where has this flooding impacted citizens absolutely the most and make expertise, possibly city staff, possibly fast-tracking through permitting, and possibly through a grant program, the ability to harden your home for what happens before Christmas. And so I think this is where, in addition to these long-term solutions, I think this is where the city gets creative and creates a grant program that allows you to save your house for the next 60 days while we work on what does the next five years look like.
Okay, well, we've come to the end of our, our question and answer, and now we'll go to the two-minute wrap-up. As I mentioned, the candidates drew lots, and the first candidate will be candidate Rubin.
Well, I just want to thank the League for allowing us the opportunity to share our thoughts, and I'd like to thank the other four gentlemen, the three that are here, and the, and Juan over there on the west coast, enjoying the, everything they have, that they have to offer in Oregon. I hope he enjoys himself there and comes back to us safely soon. I'm looking very forward to the next 21 days that we're having now, 21 days, guys? So, because this has been a great experience. It's been great out there talking to as many people as I've had the opportunity to speak to. It's been great getting closer with these gentlemen, Juan. They're wonderful people, and, and in any direction we go, I don't think anyone can go wrong. Just by looking at these three gentlemen and myself, I definitely have the razor caucus vote, because I'm the only one who uses a razor up here. But, but I just want to thank you guys for making this a better campaign and, and possibly a better city, and, and I want to thank the League for, for helping us. And I'll look forward to answering any questions you have. You're certainly welcome to visit BarryRubin.com. That's B-A-R-R-Y-R-U-B-I-N dot com. And you'll find out more about me and my background and all that I care to do for the city. And any questions you might have, you're welcome to find my phone number there as well, and I'll answer the calls and answer your questions. So I look forward to your support, and thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you tonight.
Thank you. Candidate Harding is next.
Thank you again for the opportunity, a chance to, to introduce myself. My family moved here in 1977, and my parents have lived in the same house since. I left for brief amounts of time to go to college and, and a little bit for a job, but we've been back ever since. My parents live in Shore Acres. My sister lives out at Tyrone. My parents have, all five of their grandkids within almost walking distance. My wife, Lee, and I have lived in our house in Placido for, I think it's 20, I think it's 20 years. And, and our three daughters were raised here. They went to, went to school here. I'll back up a step. I went to Shore Acres Elementary. I went to Riviera Middle School, and then I went off to go to University of Florida. After college, I worked for Outback for 15 years and got to build Outbacks up and down the state. We, we left the corporate world to build a restaurant down on Beach Drive called Bella Brava and left that in 2013 to build a brewery called, called Three Daughters Brewing. And I, and this is the, the next evolution in, in my professional career, and I think that, that a strong business background and what Three Daughters has become in the community and what we've been able to develop it into lends, lends acquired skills through the years and a lot of failings, but acquired skills through the years to make me a, a very viable candidate for city council. And, and I look forward to the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is candidate Boland.
Uh, thank you very much. Pete Boland here. Thank you so much for, for caring, for those of you that showed up, or for those of you that are watching or putting it together. It means a lot you care about this city. And one thing that I can share is it's easy to fall in love with St. Pete, and, and you know, whether you're, you're new or a native like me, this is a very special place, and I'm very proud to have the opportunity to serve this place that I love so dearly. I would say that this, this campaign's a lot, a lot about local issues. You know, this is, this is all about the local elections, right? This is about where we are going as a city and what we can do to protect the things we have and also to ensure that we're bringing more prosperity to us in the future. You know, there's not, there's not going to be a steep learning curve for me when I get up there on that council. So many issues have continued to come to my doorstep over the years, whether it be the homelessness issue down in Williams Park, or the fact that Williams Park is in disrepair and needs a lot of attention, or it's gun violence, or it's noise ordinance, or it's flooding, like my home's been flooded five times growing up in Shore Acres, or it's economic development. You know, I'm not someone that's going to lead by taking a backseat. I'm going to take and tackle things head-on. I'm going to address the issues. I'm, I'm not afraid of what the polls may say or what the backlash is going to be. I'm going to be a leader. I'm going to go out there and speak what I believe to be true and try to lead and make a difference. I want to do this to, to make a difference and solve real problems for us. I, I, I believe this is a responsibility to do this for me right now. I have the support of my family, I have the support of my businesses, the Galley and Mary Margaret's Downtown on the core, and I have a responsibility to my neighbors and my friends and family to try to make St. Pete the best it can be and put St. Pete first.
Thank you. Next is candidate Kerry.
Uh, thank you so much to all of you who attended and League of Women Voters and Divisible 13 and Sierra Club for hosting us tonight. What really makes St. Pete home for my wife, Eileen, and I is the community that we have here. And in March of 2020, that community was never more important to us. We had become homeowners about nine months previously, and we've both found ourselves out of work. And we were fortunate and privileged enough to have a community at our church that kept us afloat until we could get back up on our feet. But that experience led me to leave my career as a chemist in pharmaceuticals to do the work of building a bigger and broader community, one that would be there for others when they needed it. And so I started organizing, and in that time, I've organized faith communities and everyday people on issues of reducing gun violence, on expanding voting access. The fact that we have early voting in our local elections this year is due to a campaign that I led, and most notably, housing. And so I've seen time and time again our elected officials being willing to shape policy and process to benefit financial interests, but when working people come and need a little help, it's like pulling teeth. And so I'm running to be a voice for everyday people on council to make sure that we're represented, because St. Pete needs leaders who face its challenges, not ones who profit from them. I am proud to be endorsed by Representative Michelle Rayner, council member Richie Floyd, Organized Labor in SEIU Florida, and the West Central Florida Labor Council, Sierra Club, as well as the National Organization for Women. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And candidate Lopez Estevez.
Um, yes, I would also like to say thank you, Ramon, to League of Women Voters, Indivisible 13, the Sierra Club, and Allendale United Methodist Church for hosting this forum. Thank you to Cameron also for your work and, and your being the VTEC to be able to connect me into the forum. Uh, thank you to the candidates for running, and thank you to everyone in the audience for caring and, and taking the time to hear from us and, and our thoughts on the issues. And I'm running because I was raised in the district. I've lived in St. Pete most of my life. My family roots go back to the district nearly five decades, and I am running to protect and preserve our character, our identity, our charm, our quality of life while we face this rapid growth and development that's taking place before us. I am the son and grandson of Cuban refugees who fled the Castro regime in the 1960s. My family taught me the meaning of the American dream through hard work, perseverance, dedication, and faith. Those are the values that have been instilled in me that I will bring forth on council. I still believe in the American dream. I believe that it is achievable. We can make decisions even at the local level on council so that everyone has an opportunity to succeed. I am a sales executive for the Tampa Convention Center, which is a municipal department that's responsible for creating jobs, generating economic impact, tax revenue, supporting small businesses, and I'm looking to bring that 13 years of local government expertise to address our district and our city's biggest challenges, such as flood mitigation, infrastructure, housing, and our rising cost of living. To learn more about me, please visit www.juanforstpete.com. Thank you again so much, and I look forward to seeing you all very soon in person.
Okay, thank you. And let's thank the candidates. I think they said this is the first time you've all been together in one forum, so thank you for that. We are really honored by that. Thank you. I just want to let you know that we recorded this, actually, not me, but Cameron, and he will have it posted on the League's YouTube and Facebook website in about a week. Okay, I'm putting him on the spot, so it'll be up there shortly. And thank you again. We appreciate your time.